I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless meeting of October 25th, 2021. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will. We are going to skip over number three temporarily. We are waiting for our official to join us. So we are going to proceed with some announcements and move forward with that. But we will come back to it. All right, some announcements. As you noticed on this agenda that we are starting to go over the town budget. It is on the town website. And we didn't do it this time, but we'll be doing it going forward to put specifically what sections that we'll be going over. So you can kind of be prepared if that's your area of interest that we'll be going over and discussing in the meetings. Also, leaf pickup is going on. This is like the Wizard of Oz. Ignore the men behind the curtain. You know, it's, it's fine. We're just trying to get things together. Leaf pickup. It has started in McCandless. If you are lucky enough to have the vacuuming trucks to come to your neighborhood, please, please, please do not put your leaves in the street. It is a very dangerous situation to have leaves in the street. They're to be to the edge of the street, but not in the street. So thank you so much. Trick or treat will be October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00. Those are the announcements that I have. We are going to move on to the meeting minutes. And the meeting minutes have been distributed to council. Are there any changes or adjustments or corrections? Right? Not hearing any is, the floor is open for a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll move to accept the meeting of Town Council minutes for October 11th, 2021.
All right, second. Okay, councilor's phone calls. Again, any changes? Hearing none, all those in favor, except for the minutes as submitted to council for October 11th, 2021, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are accepted. Now is the time for public comment. If you are joining us by Zoom, please put your name in the chat box and your address and we will get to you. We'll do the in-person people first to give the Zoom people a little more time to get their names in and we will call on you in order that you have signed up. All right, so, and these, these are five-minute comments and they are on anything on the agenda or just general comments. So let's start with citizens that are here tonight. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment?
I'm Sister Mary Trotman. I'm a Sister of Divine Providence, 9,000 Babcock Boulevard. I have learned that the town council has issued an occupancy permit to Midstate Shooting Center. That was a mistake. And I'd like to give you three reasons why it was a mistake, recognizing that there are others. First of all, example, on October 8th, in an apparent suicide pact at a Holly Hill gun range, they killed a 21-year-old woman and wounded a 23-year-old man. That's the example. They went into the shooting range, rented a gun, kissed each other goodbye, put their heads together. He wrapped his arm around her and put the gun to her head and pulled the trigger. The bullet went through her head and entered his head. The range was in a shopping center. Midwest will be similarly located in a shopping center with restaurants and movie theaters and close by worship sites and an elementary school. Do we really want this sort of thing in McCandless? For anyone who says that a tragedy like Holy Hill has not happened here, Holly Hill, I encourage you to read the Thornton Wilder novel, The Bridge of San Luis Rey. When the bridge fell, that hadn't happened before. Second, start with a question. Will the required permit prepared by the chief of police require that weapons be unloaded as the shooters enter and leave the building? And who will check that? Will the town station a police officer at the door during business hours to do the checking? So many people have been killed by guns that were not loaded. Think Alec Baldwin. An assistant director unwittingly handed Alec Baldwin a loaded weapon and told him it was safe to use in the moments before the actor fatally shot a cinematographer, the court records show. Cold gun, the assistant director announced, according to a search warrant filed in a Santa Fe court. Instead, the gun was loaded with five rounds. And when Mr. Baldwin pulled the trigger on the set of a Western, he killed the cinematographer. So many people have been killed by guns that were not loaded. Do we really want this thing in McCandless? Third, Midwest sells assault weapons. Will they be selling assault weapons in McCandless Crossing? To believe that the Supreme Court opinion of 2008 means any gun, anytime, anywhere is a serious error. The court stated, like most rights, the Second Amendment right is not unlimited. It is not a right to keep and carry any weapon whatsoever, in any manner whatsoever, and for whatever purpose. This suggests that the town could regulate the types of firearms sold by Midwest. The court cited a precedent. We therefore, quote, we therefore read Miller, the case, to say only that the Second Amendment does not protect those weapons not typically possessed by law-abiding citizens for lawful purposes. Do we really want this sort of thing in McCandless? The sale of assault weapons? Dick's Sporting Goods voluntarily quit selling them. Issuance of an occupancy permit exposes the citizens of McCandless to tragedy potential, unnecessary deaths, and the possible proliferation of assault weapons. Remember the town mission statement. The town of McCandless governs based upon solid core values of integrity, straightforwardness, pragmatism, and an attitude of public service and selflessness. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I think I saw Mr. Akos coming.
Evening, I'm Gregwell Pash, just out of the 840 Edward Road on McCandless, in McCandless. On October 11th, 2021, I attended in person Town Council meeting. Agenda for the meeting had a public comment as a fifth item on the agenda list. There was first, the call to order. Second, there was the Pledge of Allegiance. Third was announcement. And fourth, approval of the minutes. Then came public comment. A gentleman who had lived in a home on Pine Creek Road for 52 years, he mentioned that he would like to see public comment moved from near the beginning of the agenda as a one-time event to having a number of public comments. Each, each listed on, following each listed agenda item after the agenda item was discussed by the presenter and the members of Town Council, but before a vote by Town Council, if any. When I was on Town Council, that was roughly the way the agenda items were handled. Typically, the president would discuss the agenda item. The presenter would discuss the agenda item. Then a member or members of Town Council would ask the presenter questions regarding, for example, the project. Then the members of council could give their comments. Then the president of Town Council would open the item to the public for their comments. Then the president would ask members of Town Council if they had any additional comments. Then if a vote was required, a vote, it would be voted on. I feel this inclusive procedure gives the Town Council and residents the best information for a particular agenda item. Now, I do not feel that, no, I do feel that the current procedure satisfies the requirement of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act since the public comment is given before Castle, since the public comment is given before Castle votes on a matter, that would be better if public comment would be after a project was presented and discussed by Town Council. That placement of public comment gives the citizen a better feel for the project. And hopefully that will result in them getting more informed comments to be considered by Town Council. Now, I said that the current practice meets the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. It does not meet the requirements of the Resolution Number 12 of 2016 adopted by McCandless. Which resolution prescribes rules for public comment at a meeting of Town Council? Does the resolution satisfy the agenda and made a part thereof? Section 1, paragraph 1, the first, first sentence states that, quote, "A separate period of public comment shall be held for each agenda item considered at each advertised or special meeting, business, business meeting of Town Council or the Town of McCandless after comments are made by Castle, but before the item is voted on." The current procedure of having public comment before the project is presented and discussed by Town Council doesn't meet this requirement. Bear in mind, if you have public comment after each project is presented to Castle and the public and the public are discussed by Castle, you will have it having more informed public and get a better exchange of ideas. By the way, I, I think the gentleman from Pine Creek still had another good idea. And that was to consider using a government grant for something other than rights for a baseball field. Town Council, especially, especially Castle member Shelley Spanholz, along with the cooperation of Town manager Bob Grimes, gone, still a good job looking into the possibility of, of that grant being used for stormwater management for the baseball field lights. Storm, stormwater management is a real necessity in McCandless. Baseball field, field lighting is a luxury. Thank you for touching.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other, other citizen comments? Anyone present? Hearing none or do we have any new comments? Okay, how are we doing?
We're close.
We're close. We're getting closer all the time. Okay, let us move on to the Northland Public Library budget presentation.
Thank you for your time this evening. For those who don't know me, I'm Amy Seale, the Executive Director of Northland Public Library. And I'm here to give our annual presentation, including our budget. Do we have the presentation that I just sent?
Excuse me, just a second. Can you all hear her? Okay, you can. All right, we had some problems with the mic a time or two ago, so I just wanted to make sure.
We're good.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we could hear you, Amy.
Great. Okay, so I just wanted to give a little bit of background on our budget presentation, our budget process. It actually began back in June. And we took to heart a lot of the information and feedback that we heard from this council and other municipal boards during last year's budget presentation. We sharpened our pencils very carefully as we were asked to do by one other municipality. And we looked at each and every single line item in this budget before we pulled that together. We looked at things like cuts to staff travel. And of course, with the pandemic, more of those meetings were done virtually. So we were able to absorb some of those cuts. The other cuts were a lot harder to make, including reduction in staff, reduction in library hours. So this budget is the culmination of all of that, that research. And it was approved unanimously by the Northland Public Library Authority Board, including the two members that were appointed by this council to represent the Town of McCandless. Next slide, please. So before I run into the, into the budget itself, I do want to share with you what we've been doing since we met last. There's been a lot going on at the library. Even during the pandemic, when the library doors were closed to the public, we were still serving the public. We never stopped doing that. And you can see on the slide, we started a lot of new services to address the needs during the pandemic, including reserved pickups, which is our version of curbside contactless pickup for people who were checking out physical materials that they had on hold. They could call the library and they could order their books or videos. And we would have them bagged for them already checked out. All they had to do was step into our vestibule, pick it up and go. And so from between March 2020 and February of this year, we had over 14,500 reserved pickups scheduled. Now, that's not items. That's just the people that, that reserved a reserved pickup slot. They averaged about five items, but some people had three or four bags full of items. So we anticipate, an estimate that that was over 72,000 items that our staff processed for, for the patrons to, to pick up. We also started a new service called Book Bundles. And that was for people who really hear browsers. They like to come into the library and browse. And when they weren't able to do that, they could just call or email the staff and say, I have a three-year-old who's really into construction vehicles. I need six books, please. And the staff would go to the shelves and pull that bundle of books. Or we could have somebody that said, I just finished this mystery series. I loved it, but I don't know what to read next. Can you please choose some, some items for me? And so in the first three months that we started that service, we had over 550 requests for that service. You can see on the slide, some of the other things that occurred. Digital items, obviously, things that people could check, check out and read on their phones or their digital devices increased in popularity. One of the things that we didn't anticipate, that we responded to the need, was the need for people to use our printers. We knew people were using our computers in the computer center, but we were surprised by how many people said, I don't feel comfortable coming into the library, even though you're offering some, some slots in the computer center, but I really need to print something out. Can you come up with a way that I can get my printouts through a contactless service? And so we figured that out and we did that for them. They were printing out resumes. They were printing out job applications and things like that. So, so we really responded to what everybody was asking for. So even though the building may have been closed, the library definitely was not. And that was shown by over 1,000 new card, library cardholders during that period in time. Staff were still presenting programs virtually. In the first week after the state mandated closure, we had story times seven days a week, starting the day after that closure happened. So our staff pivoted on a dime to make sure that those kids still had their story times. Go ahead, Arjane. And all of this resulted, I don't know how well you can see this graph, but the top line there is circulation. The graph represents circulation of physical items. And that top line is in Northland. And so the, the top graph represents the 2021 year to date up through about May. And we more than doubled the circulation of any other library in Allegheny County. So more than double, the physical items were checked out right here at our library than any other library. And that includes the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh and Oakland. And the, the graph down below shows all of 2020. And again, we were nearly double the circulations of any other library in Allegheny County. So when you ask, why do we need a library? It's because people want to check these books out and they are still doing that. And I can tell you that even for 2020, we had reduced circulation, obviously because of the pandemic. But we are already this year recovered so that as of the end of September, we have already checked out more items than we did in all of 2020. So they are coming back in full force. And this doesn't happen just on its own. This took a lot of staff time, staff coming from all different departments of the library to help and make sure this happened. Most of these items had to be checked out and bagged and, and set aside and labeled for patrons to come in and pick them up. And just as a note, we have to file a state report every year, sort of like our tax return to justify all of the state funding we receive. And in 2020, our total material use or checkouts was down about 16%, which isn't too bad considering all of the closures. And again, as I mentioned, we're already above that number at this point, this time this year. And just as a note to McCandless residents, use of the collection represents about 38%, whereas the McCandless population for our immediate service areas, about 33%. So McCandless residents are checking out more items than, than on average, based on our five supporting municipalities. Okay, next one. So we heard from our patrons. I won't run through all of these, but these, this is just some of the, the feedback that we got from our, our patrons during this time. We actually had posted these emails and little signs that they made on our staff hallway. And it stretched almost three quarters of the way down that hallway. And that really helped to keep the staff motivated because it was a challenging time, obviously, for the staff to be working in the building as well, especially once we started opening the doors and letting the public back in the building. So I just wanted to share some of that, that feedback. They liked the new services that we had. We had a team draw us a little sketch thanking us right before the holidays for still being there and, and for being able to, to serve them as well. Are there any questions about the, the services that we provide during, provided during the pandemic at this point? So I'm going to start off with some, some highlights from our budget, which I believe you all should have received the packet on our budget. Our budget for 2021 did include significant revenue reductions. And we reduced staffing overall by about 4%. Earlier in the year, we had higher reduction in staffing. As vacancies came up, we left a lot of them vacant. But now as the patrons are coming back into the building, they not only want us to keep doing a lot of the contact lists and remote hybrid digital kinds of programs, they want the in-person things too. So they're not letting us stop those things. But they want to add back in what they were used to from before. So we've had to fill some of those positions, but we have maintained and intend to maintain that 4% staffing reduction moving forward. We will continue to address some compensation issues that we have. And so our staffing budget will remain about the same, even though we reduced the staffing hours. We've, as I mentioned, we've responded to their demand to keep going with some of the virtual programming and contactless services. And we had been working for a number of years to include our annual capital improvement transfer into our operating budget. And this came out of some conversations that we had a number of years ago with our municipal managers. And we had had a year where we had to ask for a more significant increase than we normally do because of some projects that we had to do on the facility. And we were asked by the managers that if we could project more even annual increases rather than have a small increase one year and then a larger increase the following year. So the best way to do that was to incorporate some of these capital costs from our capital improvement fund into our annual budget. And we've been working over the years to do that by reducing expenses in a number of ways. And with this budget that we've presented, we actually will achieve that. We even had one year, a number of years ago, where there was a storm sewer that broke and we had a sinkhole on the property. And because we didn't have enough money in a, a capital fund, we actually had to come back to the municipalities to ask for some help in the middle of the year for that. And so by doing this and establishing a reserve fund that we also have done, the hope would be that we wouldn't, wouldn't have to come back again, you know, beyond the normal operating budget for that kind of a request. Over the years, there are a lot of maintenance projects on the facility that had to be put off. And we are trying to get caught up on those. We did the HVAC, replaced that and the roof in the last couple of years. And we went out and got over $700,000 in external grants to make that happen. And you'll see, you also have a copy of our capital improvement plan for the next, I think it's four years out that we have on there. It shows the different projects that we still need to do. We have windows that are original to the building that was built in 1978 that are leaking. Every time it rains, we, we put down buckets and rags. So we've solved the roof leaks, but we still have the windows. We have a parking lot that hasn't been repaved since 2005, I believe. So we've got a lot more projects that we're trying to get caught up on. And we're trying to do that without having to return to the municipalities for additional funding for those. So revenue summary. We do know already the state has approved their budget for next year and state funding for live, public libraries will be flat. And it's important to note that this funding is actually still about 23% below the 2009 state funding level. There was a significant cut at that point. And state funding has been almost flat. There was a 9% increase in 2020, but otherwise it's been pretty much flat. The RAD funding, we've projected about a 3% increase. We're not sure yet what the RAD is going to do. They do not approve their final budget until December. And this is not unusual. We always have to kind of project what we think they're going to do. They had cut funding for 2021. We're hopeful that they may restore that. The Allegheny County Library Association actually requested a 10% increase from the RAD. I'm not terribly confident that they're going to get a full 10% increase. I would hope that we might get a 5% increase, but we're being prudent with our budgeting and, and budgeted a 3% increase for that. Table gaming, we have seen that start to recover already from the pandemic. We're hoping it will continue to recover, but that's a small portion of our budget. So even though we're projecting a significant increase in that funding, it still represents a small percentage of our revenue budget. Internally generated revenue, we're hoping will increase again. We did just start renting out our meeting rooms again in September. So we are hoping that that will continue to pick up. Any questions on, on the revenue summary at this point? Go ahead to the next one.
Can you give me a quick question?
Yes, David.
On the RAD funding in, in the budget, I think it said it's like a 3.3% increase.
Right.
If that comes in closer to 10%, where does that excess go?
That would be used into the budget. We do, we are required to expend those RAD funds annually. So we can't set those aside for capital projects. But my guess would be if there are other, that we would use that for some of the operating funds. And if we then had some excess funds, they would be used to offset additional capital expenses. That's what we've traditionally been doing over the years. You know, we try and hold the budget still as tight as we can and then try and set that money aside for capital funding, which is, you know, where we've gotten the, the funds to do the projects that we've done so far. Yes?
You use the term flat and other words to show the budget. But if you look at your approved budget from last year, your revenues went up a million dollars.
We.
A million more than you had budgeted for.
So a large portion of that, that we are showing in this year, what we got was from the PPP loans that we had forgiven. Are you, you're talking about our actuals versus the budgeted?
Yeah.
Yes. So about $800,000 of that was from two PPP loans. One that we received in 2020 and the other. and the other that we received in 2021, both of which were forgiven in 2021. So that's the, a large portion of it. State funding, we did not know at the time the budget, the 2021 budget was passed, the state had passed that bifurcated budget. So they had only passed, I think initially they did five twelfths. And so that's what we used in that budget. Because we didn't know what we were going to get for the remaining seven twelfths. And so that came in higher than what was budgeted because of that.
So your state paid came in at what, 130 or 140 thousand dollars more than you had budgeted?
I thought that sounds great. Yes.
So those two numbers together is that?
It's pretty close.
Million dollar. Windfall.
Yes.
So where are you guys spending the million?
Um, well, the state's funding went went mostly towards other costs in the in the operating budget. That budget was was pretty lean. And so once we knew we had that money, we were able to restore some of the items that we had targeted that we were going to cut because of that lean budget. The PPP money, in fact, I thought a slide coming up. Actually, if you go to the next slide, I'm sure this is going to answer that question. Should say CARES Act one more. So this talks about the two PPP loans that we had. We had a deficit in our capital improvement savings fund. And the authority board approved using the bulk of the PPP windfall, if you will, although it's, it's really our operating funds because we had to spend the PPP money. I just want to make that clear. We did spend that on salaries and utility costs, but that resulted in some additional funds. So we are, have shifted that to our capital savings fund. And there's about there's a small portion of that that will be used again to close a revenue gap for the 2021 operating fund. And again, we could have maintained some of those additional cuts, but because we knew we had that, the board chose to to restore a little bit of that spending. So we'll use part of that for that.
Did the board look at spending that million dollars to offset the costs? Or the, or the revenues that each member of the of the communities give, give the library?
They they felt it was important to use the bulk of it for the capital savings account because that represented costs that we would end up coming back to the municipalities for in the future. If we had those projects, we needed to fund, you know, the the building that we have. There are unfortunately a number of repairs that have been put off for many years. So rather than come, keep coming back to the municipalities for help with those large projects, they chose to put these funds into them.
700,000 for your last capital project, right?
Yes, and that was about, it was a little over half. That was what, 1.2 million dollar project on? But there, all the windows need to be replaced, the doors need to be.
Can you stay a little closer to the mic?
Sure.
People have listening via Zoom or having a harder time hearing. So if you stay closer to the mic, they'll be able to hear you.
Sure. Is that, so did I answer your questions on that?
Yeah, you answered my question.
Okay. The the slide before, we we don't, if you want to go back to that briefly, we can. It just shows that the percentages for our revenue sources are pretty stable from this year to what we're projecting for next year. So that shows the total municipal contributions, the RAD, the state funding are internally generated. So so one revenue source that did increase for 2021 was our own foundation support. They stepped up last year and they have already committed to hold that increased funding for 2022 for us as well. Even though it was a rough year for fundraising, since we couldn't hold any of those in person. Okay, if you'll advance again, or Jay, one more. There you go. So this is our expenditure summary. As I mentioned, we have reduced our total staffing hours by about 4%. But we are doing our best to try and hold some increase in salaries for staff. There were no increases for 2021. We are watching our turnover rates increase and like anybody else out there, we're seeing fewer and fewer applicants for a lot of those positions. So we really are looking to try and and have some competitive salaries. I just saw there was an executive order by the governor that if you want to be eligible for state grants going forward, you're going to have to meet a $13.50 an hour minimum wage. So we're still trying to figure out how that might affect us and our ability to to go after some of these state grants. But we currently have out of, we have about 15 salary levels, grade levels, and six of those would be at 1350 and below. So if, you know, a minimum wage requirement like that goes into effect, we have a lot of work to do. So it's very important for us to try and maintain some competitiveness with our our compensation plan. Healthcare, we are projecting a reduction. Last year, we switched to a partially self-insured plan and as we move a little bit further along that, we can judge what those risks are to the libraries. We're trying to be conservative with that. We don't want to get caught short, but the more data we get, we're able to to reduce some of those costs as well. We've reduced staff continuing education and training expense, which is not really sustainable. It was because of our talented and qualified staff that we were able to shift so quickly to to change some of those services during the pandemic. We can handle that for maybe a year or two and do more virtual type training, which is a little bit cheaper. But, you know, going forward, we would like to be able to reinstate some of that continuing education. We do have a requirement by the state in order to be eligible for state funding that staff are required to obtain six CE credits over every two-year period. So we're always keeping an eye towards those state standards. Likewise, books and materials budget and processing supplies must be at least 12% of our expenditures each year. So we try and budget a little bit over that. Because you never know if there's some expenses we didn't anticipate that bump up our expenditures, but we still have to meet that 12% collection expenditure for the state. And RAD also requires that we meet those state standards. So there's a lot of other funding on the line. We need to maintain those funds for the necessary building repairs, as I mentioned, to address the overdue maintenance. And this budget finally achieves what we've been working on for a number of years to try and get those transfers to the capital improvement fund set in our annual budget so that we can continue to pay for those without having, you know, large fluctuations in our, you know, requests from the municipalities for those projects. Any questions on the expenditures? So the next slide. This gives you the municipal details on this and the and the summaries. So if you remember in 2021 for this, the 2021 budget, we were asked by by this council and some of our other municipalities to take a hard look last year because of all the challenges with the pandemic. And we did reduce a significant portion, $85,000 from our total municipal contribution for 2021. So what we are as requesting is that that be reinstated for 2022 and then a small increase of 1.21% above that so that we can complete that transfer of funding those capital, the capital improvement fund. So using the formula that we have, you can see how that breaks out for the the municipalities, what portion each one has to, is being asked to contribute. And we did want to make sure that we noted that, you know, the McCandless contribution is actually lower than it was for 2019. So we do recognize that, you know, we're, we really are trying to to hold this lower. We know it's a tough budget year for everybody. And it's been a, it's been a tough year for us and we've tried to do as much as we can. You'll see that our projected actuals for this year are coming in even lower than they were budgeted for. Some of that was because a lot of the pandemic closures and things continued longer than we expected. So we didn't have some of those in-person programming expenses, but we are starting to do in-person programming again. So again, we're hoping to get back to, you know, some pre-pandemic levels of programming and activities in the building in in 2022. Are there any questions? Yes.
You had said that that you're asking for what, one point something? But the numbers here, you get your budget at 641 for 2021 and you're going to 675. It says it's a 5.23% increase. Is that correct?
That may, that's for McCandless?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, okay.
So there's the, we're asking for the restoration of the cuts that were made for 2021 and then the 1.2% is above that restoration. So so that total is it's
Two, three.
For McCandless, yes. Overall, for the municipalities, that's about a 6.12% increase. And all of the other municipalities, three of them have already approved this budget and the fourth has indicated that they will. They have no, no issues at all with this budget and it's scheduled to be approved in early November.
Amy, I got a couple of questions on the five-year the capital improvement plan. So for, for this year, the the kind of preliminary work for the downstairs festival has started. And then next year is the, is obviously the big project. And then what's the the project in 2023 for the upstairs festival? How, how is that different from, you know, the project that's coming up now?
Sure. The project we're looking at now has a lot more involved. The, there's an elevated patio that you need to use to access the lower level entry. And it's that patio that's wa- eroding away underneath and it's pulling away from the building. So we must replace that within the next few years before it becomes a a significant safety issue. The upper vestibule is essentially just rebuilding, replacing the doors and maybe doing a few other things there. The doors are not energy efficient by any means. And so we really would like to replace those. We also, if there's any way to to go with the automatic sliding doors, which is what we're looking to do on the lower level. We're hoping that that will reduce costs with using the button pushes for the doors to open. With the number of people who have come in and gone, we're replacing those buttons a couple of times a year and they are not cheap. So we're looking for something that's, that's more automatic, which would improve accessibility as well as in the long run, hopefully require less maintenance. But we're truly looking for energy efficiency on that one as well. That's why it's so much less because it's essentially replacing the doors.
Okay. And then down in the furniture and equipment, the the sorter system is 150,000 for 2023. How is the library projecting that as a, essentially a labor savings? You know, that seems like an investment that's a, that's geared towards cutting down on labor costs.
Right. And and that would be the hope that it it definitely would. It would pre, it would check in the book, the materials and it would pre-sort them. So that would definitely save on on some staffing time. We're not exactly sure yet because some of it depends on, these sorting systems take a fair amount of space. And it will depend on how much room we end up with as to how many stations that it can sort into. And that will help determine, you know, the the staffing that that we can conserve with that. Any other questions? Yeah, I do want to note that we do have the president of our board, Casey Sample, is here. And we have Irene Caliendo, who's one of our McCandless representatives. And Dana Getz, I believe, is online as well. And I didn't know if any of them wanted to add anything to part of the presentation.
So all very good questions. And I hope Amy was able to answer them. I'm Casey Sample, the president of the authority board. And I give everyone great credit here for, you know, your consideration of our budget. It's not easy to run a library, a public library of the size of Northland. And our staff, hopefully in the presentation, you really got the idea that our staff are world-class, great assets to our communities and with Northland Public Library sitting in McCandless Township that you'll you'll consider passing the budget this evening. Any questions for me? No, thanks.
Thank you. We, thank you for your presentation. I think we have.
Madam President, may I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. Irene Caliendo, a board member from McCandless. Just so that I'm coherent and quick, I I prepared my remarks. I'd like to thank the members of council for the opportunity to speak on this matter. I'm not going to reiterate what Amy has said about how the budget was arrived at or how the wonderful and creative programming that Northland has provided our citizens. I appreciate that you have a difficult job and that you are trying to balance the budget. We all are. However, I ask you to consider some other aspects. The staff has gone through an arduous process and worked very hard, effectively and diligently to arrive at the most responsible budget possible. Please understand, there are no wants in this budget. They are all needs. You might think typically of the offerings of the library as having intrinsic value only. And make no, make, make no mistake about it, they do. The intrinsic value is immeasurable. But as council members, I ask you to think of the extrinsic value Northland Public Library provides. Not just to your residents, but to McCandless as a community. Education, opportunity, exposure to ideas and books and knowledge and programs are great equalizers. Having a quality library with quality professional staff helps to lift up some of the members of our community. Not to mention the population of the four surrounding municipalities. But having a modern building in good condition that offers not just the traditional library services, but innovative and constantly expanding services makes McCandless an attractive community in which to live. Therefore, the library helps to bring quality residents to McCandless. The library helps to increase the value of our property. Northland Public Library helps attract people with higher incomes. All of that translates to more tax dollars from McCandless. Please do not be penny wise and pound foolish. Please do not force our library administration to pare down what will be available to our residents. Just as we have a responsibility to maintain our schools, so too do we have a responsibility to maintain and enhance the services and quality of those services of the library. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to cut anyone else off? Thank you all. Thank you all so much. I think we have this later on our agenda to possibly to to vote on. So we are very fortunate to have Judge Beamer coming on Zoom. And as soon as we see that happen, we'll be sure that that's wonderful.
Can we please have Kathleen Ropa come up here? And I think, can you see? Whatever screen that you want. Okay, all right. Judge Beamer, thank you so much for being, for helping us out this evening. We appreciate it so very much.
Thanks. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I'm honored to do it. Okay, do, as Kathleen, if you would raise your right hand, please, to be sworn. And repeat after me. I, Kathleen Ropa.
I, Kathleen Ropa.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey and defend.
I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the laws of the township of McCandless.
And the laws of the township of McCandless.
And I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
As a Ward Five Council member.
As a Ward Five Council Member.
With fidelity. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge Beamer.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Um, I think we're down to reports of committees. Administration and Finance Committee.
Uh, we have several items on the agenda tonight. The first is to review checklist number nine, dated September first, twenty twenty-one. September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, totaling one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight cents, submitted each member of council, posted on the board and town. Does anybody have questions about that, Trish?
Evening, Council.
Just, um, if you could just clarify the Whitney Place, that the hundred ninety-six thousand dollar expenditure is because it was such a, it was on page thirteen. In case anyone, um, you know, any of our residents are looking at that, because it is such a big chunk of expense.
Project that occurred to strengthen the power work that runs under Whitney Place. It, the decision was made to, uh, to grab that project as, as opposed to take it out and replace it and kind. Significant savings, uh, will cost effective means of doing that, so that, that is what that project is for.
Thank you. So it's part of our stormwater management.
And as Bob mentioned, it did come in under budget.
Great, thank you.
It was, um, did through safe contracts.
Wish I did have a question. Under the Real Estate Tax Agency Fund, there were numerous.
Yes.
To, or logic.
Yes, they're common, I'm sorry.
Who are they? Why, why so many refunds?
There's, they are a, um, popular mortgage company locally. And when we receive double payments from the taxpayer as well as the mortgage company, we return it to the mortgage company to credit back to their escrow accounts.
Those were all just overpayments.
Correct.
Correct. We shouldn't have gotten.
Yes, this is the month that we see the most of these.
Oh, really?
Yes. Okay.
Nothing, just need this motion to approve that checklist.
Is there a motion to update checklist bills?
My left.
Second?
Second.
And all those in favor of approving checklist bills, and we gave a thing, I. Opposed?
Item, since Trish is still here, to review the monthly financial summary and dashboard report.
Yes, you have in your packets the monthly report for September. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on revenue or expenditures for the general fund. Um, or any other items that I might be able to pour additional information for.
Pretty much on budget?
Yes. We're a little behind in September because of prior year, because of money we received from the Fed last year. So it looks like we're behind, but we're not. It's just because that was unexpected revenue we received in two thousand and twenty.
Further questions?
Thank you very much.
There was no meeting of the McCandless Industrial Development Authority. And the North Hills Council of Governments, uh, due to Angela's departure from the board. I was out of town. And we could not, uh, have a liaison at that meeting, so I apologize to council for whatever that, um, problems that caused, but in the future. He's just going to take over those, I would believe, and she and I will. Pittsburgh North Regional Chamber of Commerce, I sit on that liaison. They had their, uh, red white booze event last Thursday with some of the local, uh, people running for, for office. And we have our upcoming meeting, uh, this Thursday afternoon at four. And the Grant Running Committee.
Yeah, I, I would just say, we, we've not met, but, um, Mr. Graham and I have been working on creating a summary of, um, the grants that our town has both received and are working on, as well as ones that have been applied for. Um, and a big part of the summary will include how the town needs to, um, manage and administrate them. Because we're finding that many of these grants, the writing of them is not the hard part. It's the administration and follow-up. Which needs, uh, a considerable amount of staff time. So we want to make sure we get a very clear picture of the grants that we are receiving. Especially when we're looking at the big projects like sidewalks and stormwater management. So I'm going to have that report for you very soon.
Thank you. Report of the Budget Committee. Summary or? Members want to. Uh, the, the town, everyone in council, and I think it's posted, uh, we have the, the proposed budget. The financial team was nice enough to sit down, uh, with, in pairs of us to really get a describe it and go through that. Thank you, Trish, for the, uh, for that. Um, and starting tonight, we'll have our presentations of certain sections for the next, how many? The next three weeks, or the next three, three meetings. Questions of the budget? Report of the Junior, Junior Council Member.
He did submit a report, and I, and it's in our packet, but I don't see him here.
This was unable to attention. This is one of the factors.
Includes the report of the Administration.
Planning and zoning committee, the, um, any questions for Jay on, and any, anything zoning? Our planning commission, they have the report in there. We have a couple of items that are coming up a little bit later today. Standing hearing board is.
The, it's. Standing hearing board did not meet in September, and we will be meeting this coming Wednesday.
Did you have anything?
No, just here in case you have any questions.
Okay, um, well, I'm sure we will on the next couple of things that we, that we do. Okay, Recreation Committee.
Thank you. Um, I would like to start by just, I'll kind of flip-flop if I may. Um, the Activities Advisory Committee, the minutes are in your packet. And I want to remind everybody that there will be a virtual, um, Thanksgiving, Turkey Day bingo on November eighteenth. Just with how things are changing in consideration of pandemic restrictions and following all guidance, we decided to continue with the virtual event. They've been very well received by our community, so we look forward to having you sign up and join us November eighteen. Um, if I could have either Mr. Graham or Ms. Breakhouse share a little more, if there's any more updates on the winter event.
We're, we're continuing to, to put that event together, and we will be announcing, um, next week. That lineup. We'll get that information out to the council the end of this week, early next week, and then start with publicity on that. We are, we're looking at, around the eighteenth of December for that. It'll include a Heritage Center program, uh, this Christmas related. Um, and just a, a few hours of some farm and hopefully, hopefully chilly events.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, Mr. Smith, if you could share, and, but the Finance Development Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center, please.
Sure, the, uh, minutes of the most recent meeting are in the packet submitted to council. One thing I, I mentioned is that there's going, uh, on November eleventh, there's a presentation on the Underground Railroad by Carol Coons. And as Mr. Graham mentions, uh, they're going to be involved in the winter event. I think, uh, those, that's all still being worked out, but there will be some Heritage Center involved. And if anyone has any questions, get through that.
And, uh, thank you. And finally, the Community Day Subcommittee did not meet, but, um, just a, a quick reply to the report of our junior council member. Um, his report indicated that there was a general, um, desire and wish among the North Allegheny band members to participate in Community Day. And I can assure you that they will be more than welcome and invited to attend our next Community Day. This year was just a very different event, so we are not excluding them. We're welcoming them back, and that is definitely part of the plans for next year. And if there are no questions, that concludes the report of Recreation.
Thank you. Town Manager's Report.
You all have received a copy of my monthly report. The only thing that I wanted to highlight was that we have submitted the Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund grant in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, um, the covert on Blazer Drive. So that has been submitted to the council. That concludes my report.
Any questions about the manager's report?
County Council's secret report.
My secret report, yes, my report was in the packet. If you have any questions, certainly let me know. Uh, we can discuss it in executive session or other one. That's the end of my report.
There is no old business on the agenda. Does anyone have any old business? All right, hearing none, then we will move to new business. This is just a bond release.
Yeah, this one's pretty, uh, simple and quick. This is the first bond reduction request for the Dassinger Farms development that was approved last year. Essentially, again, what happens with each of these is they complete a certain amount of work that was approved for the plans, submit a request for release of funds. The engineers review and confirm that everything they've requested was covered so far in the construction. So the amount that you see there was recommended by the town engineer.
The floor is open for motion to approve this bond petition. House and the response halls.
I'm managed to approve bond reduction request number one, uh, submitted by H and F Property Development LLC for the Dassinger Farms Plan. The amount of two hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-one cents, as recommended by the town engineer's letter dated October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Sir, a second?
Okay.
Carl, any questions about this housekeeping? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think we have a little presentation on this next one. RJ, is this going to be you, or?
I can just give a little.
Okay, okay.
So this is the development that is now being referred to as McCandless Point. Uh, it is at ninety-one oh one Perry Highway. It is my understanding that this has been a bar or restaurant iteration of one type or another over the years. Uh, the property owner is now coming back, uh, would like to redevelop the site essentially, so that it is a small mixed-use retail, uh, situation. Maybe, I believe, three or four, uh, storefronts, whether it would be local services or only quick-service food. Uh, this, this is a legally non-conforming property. So what that means is historically, it's always been commercial property, even though for whatever reason it's remained, you know, zoned R-two over the years. Uh, so whenever a property like that wants to change uses, they have to come to the zoning hearing board to get a thumbs up. They did receive that for this small local mixed-use retail, uh, use, and I believe, unless you have any other preliminary questions for me, we are ready to turn it over to the developer. All right.
Thank you, RJ.
Okay. Good evening, members of council. Uh, my name is Michael Len. I'm Director of Engineering with Sheasley and Associates. We are the site's of engineer for, for the project. With me this evening, uh, via Zoom, is Bruce Pollak from RSSC Architecture, and Jesse Kretrensek, also from RSSC Architecture. And, uh, finally with us is the owner, Ron Sfranco. So RJ did an excellent job of describing the project. The plans are to redevelop a, a little under acre site on, uh, at ninety-one oh one Perry Highway. This is the site of the, uh, Magoo's, former Magoo's Restaurant. Um, what we're proposing is an approximately five thousand eight hundred square foot building with, uh, mixed-use local, um, uh, types of, a type of, uh, maybe offices or, um, retail or restaurants, but the restaurants will not have seating. It would be basically just to takeout restaurants. Um, we have applied and received var- four variances. And, uh, because this is such a unique site, um, and the use, we received variances for parking-based complete, based upon a complete traffic study, and received that. Variance for proposed parking stall dimension to be nine foot by eighteen, eighteen foot. Uh, minimum rear setback required, reduced to two foot. And then also, uh, restaurant banquet facility, non-conforming use to a mixed-use retail or retail local, non-conforming use. Okay. Um. Uh, let's pull up the rendering. We'll pull, actually pull up the, the existing conditions. I think that'll be it. Yeah, no problem. What we're going to, what I'm going to show you is first the aerial photo of what is currently there, and then a rendering of what we're proposing. I believe this was included within your board packets, too. Do you have the aerial that I sent you?
Oh, I, I have, yeah, I have the, uh.
That's probably best way to reference that. Thank you. Okay, as you can see, uh, this is, these are the existing conditions of the site with Perry Highway along the eastern side. And then Perry Vista Avenue to the north, and Mohican Avenue to the south. Uh, you see the location of the existing building, and also what you can see is the parking lot, especially the extent of the impervious area that the parking lot has. It goes all the way to, uh, the curb line of Perry, of Perry Highway. Um, that's what we aim to do, is we aim to improve the site from being what you'd say a sea of asphalt. RJ, if you go to the proposed conditions? Yes, that would be great. Okay, hopefully everybody can see that. What we're proposing is basically, uh, two areas of, well, first thing, let me take a step back. We're keeping the same access on Perry Highway that is currently there. And when you enter the site, there'll be two different parking areas, uh, one to the north and one to the south. We provided thirty-six spaces, thirty-four regular, two handicap, and that's more than what is required based upon our traffic study. Um, stormwater management-wise, we have a stormwater management facility, basically this underground facility located on the southern portion of the site. Uh, that has been designed to township requirements. Uh, landscaping-wise, we have, uh, based on the use, and RJ, you may want to help describe this a little better than me. Based on the use and the different zoning districts, we're currently in R-two zoning district. But the townhomes to the northwest, uh, that's an R-three zoning district. Um, we had problems, I guess, defining an exact buffer yard to adhere to. So what we've done is we've worked with RJ and the township staff, town staff, to develop a landscape plan that was, that was thought to be adequate um, to, um, facilitate sites and protect glare from entering any of the adjacent property owners. So glare from headlights, I should say. So, and I believe that was a modification request. Why don't you, you speak the.
Sir, the, yeah, speak the, the code language.
So essentially, if we were to treat this property as the R-two zone, the way their buffering code works is it takes whatever zone the property is in, and then whatever zone the abutting property is, and you sort of look at a grid chart, and it gives you basically how deep. the abutting property is, and you sort of look at a grid chart, and it gives you basically how deep, how intense the buffer yard would be. Well, if you're looking at an R2 to an R3, or even just an R2 to R2, it's essentially nothing. But that's what this property is zoned, so there's not really something that you can really clearly point to, to treat it more like a commercial property. If you were to turn around and say, okay, this is, you know, essentially this is on Perry Highway, let's treat it like a C3 highway commercial, the buffering would be so intense that although, you know, this is a commercial use, physically you just couldn't fit it on this site because it's an infill redevelopment site. So what the conversations that we had had, Mr. Len and I, were essentially, the main goals are, we don't want any of the residential adjacent properties to be blasted by headlights from people's vehicles, you know, disturbed by the use of the parking lot. So the existing vegetation on the townhome side of the site, plus the vegetation that's being added in this proposed buffer yard, as they've shown here in the rendering, plus some of those shrubs and bushes on the property that's adjacent, that was previously that vacant land, but now is the expanded parking lot, that's kind of, we were focusing more on what is the function of this proposed buffering versus restricted adherence to the R2 code, which really would not be particularly functional. So this is kind of what, what they've come up with. Not really sure that they could fit, you know, again, a full-depth commercial buffering, but this is the one modification request that remains at this point on the plan. They're essentially asking, it was what we're showing here. Okay.
Okay, in addition to the landscaping and the stormwater management, we have provided sidewalks along the three roads that are adjacent to a property, Perry Highway, Perry Vista Avenue, Mohican Avenue. So those sidewalks go for the full frontage of our property along those roadways. More in the process of acquiring a few permits, a PENDO highway occupancy permit, and those are all items that were listed as part of the engineer's comment letter, which I do believe you have as part of your packet also. So I will open up for questions from the council.
Question on the buffering?
Yes.
So the, the part right now that's the new, that additional square over there? Would it make sense to have some kind of solid barrier, like a, you know, like a privacy fence or something like that to make sure, because that's, you know, cars pulling in and out of there with how close those townhomes and the, and the house on the west side? Would it make sense to have some kind of solid barrier?
What the landscaping?
Miss, we met with Mr. Verlinic, who's a neighbor, he party there. We gave him literally 15 to 20 feet of sideyard for him, his purposes. Right now, it's just kind of a fence, because there were zero setbacks back in the 60s. So the house and the fences, then we're building a mound, mound and trees against his property. He really didn't want a fence there. We asked, we were going to put like a six-foot white fence, like really. And he says, no, if you build a mound and put the trees and bushes there, that'd be fine, so.
We're getting up for the townhomes in the back. How is, how will that be considered?
The townhomes, I think with the door spaced this way, they're.
They're a part. The townhomes at a higher elevation.
And then the front door spaced right across, I think, right?
Exactly. Those are, yeah. And there's a combination, I guess, let me take a step back. First of all, with the neighbor, those, that landscaping is proposed to be evergreens. So those will be, once those grow out, you know, that'll be, that'll definitely protect the glare how much of the year. The townhomes, like I said, it's at a higher elevation, but then there is existing vegetation, along with our proposed vegetation that should screen. I mean, there should be no car, car headlights affecting the residents. I mean, there's a good, talking about a good 10-foot difference between the back of the driveway, back of the driveways to our site.
And I know I saw somewhere in there, there was a concern with, like, turning radius for delivery trucks and things like that. If I remember right, this property used to have a curb cut down on Mohican. I'm not sure exactly where, but I remember that there was a curb cut on Mohican. Would that alleviate those turn radius problems if that were, I don't even know if it could be reconnected or not?
Yeah, unfortunately, it would not. What we've done is we, with our turning radii software, which us civil engineers use to, to model what different vehicles would do, we modeled a delivery truck both coming in from southbound and northbound 19 to make deliveries on the northern side of, of the building there, right in the parking lot. We're able to get that through. It takes a couple turns, but it is able to get through and get in and out of the site. We also modeled a fire vehicle and an ambulance, and both of those would be accessing, be able to access just the front portion of the site. And even in worst case, if there was, the fire vehicle would be able to access the site from either Mohican or Perry Vista. So, and finally, we did model a garbage vehicle coming in. The dumpster enclosure is on the, in the southern portion of the parking lot. Unfortunately, it's not shaded in, but the pointers right there.
Quick follow-up to that.
Yeah.
So coming southbound on Perry Highway, you did the turning radius to get in to go to the northern part of the site, and you said there might have to be like essentially a three-point turn.
Yeah.
That wouldn't affect traffic behind that delivery truck, right?
No.
So the three-point turn would happen entirely on the parking lot?
Oh, yes, definitely. Yes.
Because we don't want, you know, somebody turning right there, but then the folks, you know, the old, the old problem up on Perry Highway before they widened it with the, with the big car deliveries, where, when they had to turn back up traffic.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the drivers are pretty talented. I mean, I'm sure they can, you know, work around and get up to the northern part of the site. We've modeled them, they come in back up, and then they'll be right there, and then exit would just be straight out. So. Thank you.
So I, I'm sorry, I have a question. It looks like, so there's only essentially Perry Highway access to each of these places of business. There's no, will there be a backdoor access? I'm thinking of, like, given a small restaurant, the need for removing trash during the workday. I was a small business owner that had a cafe, and you've got to empty the cans. So if I'm in the northernmost point, and it's busy lunch hour from this, are you sin, I'd need to send my crew out through the front door with trash to get.
I believe, and this may be, Jesse may be able to confirm this. There should be exits through the rear of the building.
Okay. Okay, but there'll be a walkway or so, at least.
There'll be concrete pad outside that they'd be able to, and then it'll be level.
I think your back buffer yard is only two feet. Is that right?
The back buffer yard?
Isn't that correct?
No, it's larger than two feet.
Wasn't that one of the variances?
That was one of the variances, but we were able to fit that in. I believe the distance there is.
Because that was part of the variance that you got from the zoning hearing board.
Let's see if I got the distance there for you. I know it's larger than two.
Yeah, that's kind of my concern with that question.
That's what I just remembered. I could be mis.
6.81, so.
Is, is the, is how big it is all the way across the back?
That's at the minimum, six.
All right, all right. Yeah, I was wondering how you're going to fit two feet. Where's the two feet? Okay, I see, I see. Okay. Thank you, thank you for the clarification. Excuse me, councilmember Verlinic for interrupting.
No, thank you. I was just curious. I wanted to make sure there was enough of a back access for that sort of purpose.
Any other questions? Councilor Spahn calls.
Thank you. My question is, I understand it is, it's on stormwater. It looks like the only new facility that you're adding is the underground chamber system. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And everything that and everything else is connected to the existing storm system?
Not necessarily. The way the site is currently oriented, half the site goes to an inlet along Perry Highway, right near the entrance, and the other half of the site currently goes to a storm system that is located on Mohican.
Yes.
Okay. We're maintaining the inlet along Perry Highway and actually reducing the amount of runoff that is going to be going to that inlet. We're, we're, we're getting the review of PENDO, since that's PENDO's inlet there. Not sure if they have to look at it. But then we're detaining the, the detentions for the overall site, may I say. But, yeah, the stormwater management facility is collecting from the southern portion of the site, on the site, reducing it, then releasing it into the system on Mohican.
Okay, I got that. So my question is, I, I think I looked at the video, I think it was an inclusion meeting, and I believe it was another business owner, neighbor across Mohican, who spoke at that meeting. Apparently, sounded like he had a basin of some sort on his property, and he was concerned about problems since it's beginning to overflow. So have you had further discussions with that property owner?
Not the property owner, but what we've been able to do with the, we're working with the township engineer, and what he's occurring is the site is currently on curbs. So any runoff coming from the site down, yes, is flowing across Mohican and into his basin. We're currently curbing the site, so to collect the runoff, send it underground into the stormwater facility, then it comes out at a release rate. So there'll be less runoff coming underground towards his basin.
Okay, I was just wondering if there's follow-up on that. Thank you. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Any other questions? Did you, is that any more presentation?
Nothing else with presentations, unless there's any other questions that you have.
All right. All right, hearing none. The floor is open for a motion.
Quick question for RJ before we.
Sure.
No, this is a zoning question. So we are not rezoning this. This will basically just be a continuation of the existing non-conforming use, but it's not going to essentially lock us into a different zoning for the property.
That, well, so the.
Going into the future.
The previously existing non-conforming use was at Bar Restaurant. That changed to this local retail services system approved by the zoning hearing board.
Right.
At this point, unless they come up for the zoning hearing board and ask for another non-conforming legal use change, they're locked into what they are trying to do.
Okay, so there's not like some kind of adverse effect of changing the non-conforming use?
That's a great question. Yeah, so actually part of that legal non-conforming use change case that they had to date to the zoning hearing board was whether it would have, if people were lesser impact on the neighborhood essentially, and the zoning hearing board's judgment was the switch was okay, it would not increase the impact.
Thank you.
And there were many items listed in the engineer's letter, but the motion does say that those would have to be addressed who made this motion, so, as well as any, anything from the town. Any other questions? The floor is open for a motion. Councilor Marshall?
I'll make a motion to, I always get the long, I'll make a motion to approve the land development application from a Candace Point submitted by RPS Hospitality Group LLC, located at 9101 Perry Highway, contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in the planning and development staff report dated October 20th, 2021, and town engineer's review letter dated September 29th, 2021. I did not read far enough to know that there is another choice. Okay, purposes of the motion, plan approval includes approval of modification request number one as identified in the attached staff report.
Okay.
Boil it down, I'm making the motion to approve it with the modification.
Right, right. Okay, questions? Take a chance. Okay, all right. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving that includes the modification number one indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much.
And thank you for putting in the sidewalks. All right. See, how would you just want to give us a little thing on that?
Sure. This motion has been several years in coming from the Allegheny County perspective. The, a number of municipalities, the managers of municipalities, engineers and attorneys have been negotiating with the EEP and the Health Department to enter into a consent order that will have an impact on the reduction of infiltration and inflow into separate sanitary sewer systems. This order, or any community that contributes to the Elka Sand sewer system, will include stipulations in terms of reductions that need to occur and what it needs to be accomplished over the next five to six years of time. The good news for the town of McCandless is that the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority has been working diligently for a number of years and is actually ahead of the curve. We've already have a flow that is below what you may hear in meetings as the gold line standard, which would be a number, a flow number, that target number that the town would have to meet. So we're already below that target number, so we're in good shape. And much of the work that we would anticipate doing with an MTSA will put us in line for future compliance as opposed to just compliance with this current order. So we are in good shape. We will continue to move forward. And so this, all intents and purposes for the town of McCandless is a very little of no impact action, but we are required as a municipality that contributes to Elka Sand to enter into this order. Is that enough?
That's probably, no, that's probably enough. MTSA is doing all the work, and we're backing them up. Bottom line.
The consent order is non-negotiable in any way.
In any way.
The MTSA had to sign it as there was zero negotiation.
It's called an order for a reason.
The negotiating took place over the last three years.
Yeah, there was, there was a group of municipalities.
Oh, yes, yeah, there was a group.
But at this point.
Once this consent order came out, it was not moving to any more negotiations.
Time and again by DEP, they were not going to be changed.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'll read the motion. Perfect. I'll move it on. Okay, motion to approve consent order and agreement between the PADEP and the ACHD for the town of McCandless.
Sir, a second? For the questions, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, see, sure, go ahead.
Yes, so we do have Mr. Jerry Kledowski here from the McCandless Square Development. If he has to answer any further questions, this master plan amendment is essentially for the purposes of, they had some sort of flex office building originally planned for phase three. Of course, the pandemic has changed some things, so they would like to come back and propose a townhome community there instead with Laurel Communities, which is a developer that has done some work in Stript Street, a couple different places downtown. Essentially, the reason that they are coming for this master plan amendment is because there are reduced setbacks that are permitted for multifamily homes in the C5 district, which this property is. However, to be able to use those reduced setbacks, you have to have them incorporated in an overall master plan. So because they were not included last time, they are coming back for your consideration to amend the plan. So because they were not included last time, they are coming back for your consideration to amend the plan.
Good evening, Jerry Kledowski with Civil Environmental Consultants. As RJ eloquently stated that I am here to represent the McCandless Square Development, the master plan for townhomes. Do you wanna pull that up on the screen?
Sure.
Okay, so as RJ stated, you can see there on the on the left-hand side of the screen there, there's approximately fifty-seven shown there, fifty-seven townhome buildings. We did modify the plan slightly to eliminate a few of those, so there's actually more green space over there than what this plan shows. The idea behind this, as RJ stated, is back in twenty nineteen, we came through with a master plan for the overall assisted living development that included the retail development on the northern portion of the site and a flex parcel that was intended to be a flex office space where the townhomes are. And due to the pandemic, everything sort of stalled out and there was a loss of interest in that. But the developer was actually able to work out a deal with a townhome developer who does a lot of high-end townhome developments in the city of Pittsburgh and surrounding area. He has, uh, you know, several hundred thousand dollar townhomes in both the Strip District. He has them in Bakery Square, uh, even has some up here at McCandless Crossings that he's done. So all the storm water is handled by an existing facility that's on the the right-hand side. So there's no additional storm water has to take place other than connectivity of storm inlets and piping to that facility. All of the utility infrastructure is in, there are some service stubs that we'll have to put into service this this portion of the project. Fire marshal has already reviewed the plan and approved it. And all of the uh, all of the landscaping was approved on the previous master plan. However, this developer and the retail developer are gonna add additional landscaping above and beyond what's required by the master plan.
But today we're just looking at approving.
Just proving the master plan.
This isn't the mass, this is just the master plan approval, okay? So if there's something that you don't like, this is just a master plan, so. Are there any questions?
Quick question, the existing cottage homes?
Mm-hmm.
Have any of those been purchased yet?
That I don't know, that.
I know the answer.
Oh.
They're not for sale.
Oh, okay.
So no.
Okay.
But they are for rent and as of last month, twenty-three of the twenty-six were already spoken for with people with move-in in February.
Okay, and the reason I ask, because it might not be apparent, is if people had bought those with the expectation that it was a mixed commercial residential development and now it's changing to being almost almost entirely residential, but it doesn't sound like that's a concern because they're they're rental.
They are.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good, but quick question.
Yes.
Has there been, like, given to the plan of management of this community? Will it be, will they receive the same benefits as those who are residing in the cottage homes? Or are they all going to be owned as individual residences or as condos with an H O A or with an H H O A?
As, yeah, as far as I, as far as I know, they're gonna be sold fee simple, there will be an H O A. But the idea behind this development is to to bring the community together. From day one when we started this whole master plan with with the town of McCandless, the the intent was to make this sort of like a a community center. So the the elderly residents will have use of the 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 retail portion of it with the brew pub and the food hall, as will the townhome residence. So the idea is to let everybody blend together. There's the town green so that everybody can can gather there as well.
Thank you. And your cross, your cross parking agreement?
We will have a, yeah, there's, there's gonna be several agreements between cross access easements, cross parking agreements, there's utility agreements.
We have the cross parking.
So we do have them.
We have the cross.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I I was just, that was mainly to make a point that you do, we do have those. I don't know if you know we have them, but we have those.
No.
All right, well, we have those.
There's some things I'm not privy to.
Where the townhomes are, is there on-street parking allowed?
Um, and I think we'll get into this when we do the site. This is just the master plan.
So again, I only ask because I don't see a whole lot of external parking really.
Right, and and that's a whole thing.
That's, but that's separate from this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, am I right?
You are.
All right, any other questions about just changing this from being a office building to condominiums is all we're doing.
Yes.
Any other questions about that? We'll get, this will be back and we'll look at it and then we can talk about parking and green space and trees and everything else. Okay, um, is there, um, floor is open for motion. Councilor Marshall?
I'm moved to approve the McCandless Square master plan amendment to incorporate townhomes into a future development space.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, let's take a five-minute um recess. If you don't mind setting the clock, please, so everyone can get back. All right, we are to E. Right?
Yes.
All right, we are to E. Um.
We, we have been looking at a preparing a grant application. It is doing whatever stuff with two ten dot as part of its multimodal grant application program. The program was very similarly to the multimodal programs that we currently have funding through. They were administered through the Department of Community and Economic Development. Been looking at various projects that have been discussed by council over the last several weeks or months. And um, just wanted to get your feel whether you want this to proceed with any of those projects and the applications. The three that I identified in or in in your update were, uh, one would be a completion of the Route Nineteen project that would total about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. That would provide the the difference between the or the funding gap, would fill that funding gap from the current multimodal project. Thompson Run Road, that's the sidewalk that would run from eighty-five hundred Thompson Run down to roughly the the Swim Club property. And then Ingamar Road from Grubbs Road to Coomer. That would complete a section of sidewalk from McCandless, well, actually, basically from Blazer Drive to the park. And that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. What we would need this evening is some type of an indication from the council whether there's one project that is before or the other and dollar enough. And then we would approve that resolution, you know, fill in those blanks for that resolution. One thing that I I just wanna make you aware in all of the cases, really, you know, the 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 town does have, the council does have the ability in any of those cases to fund these projects through assessment, creating assessment districts and filling back those people that were those property owners that were benefiting from it. You know, so that's another factor that you may wanna consider either at this time or in the future. But you know, um, that's always one of those things you have in your back pocket to be able to to utilize. Question tonight is whether or not you want to proceed with any of these projects and submit an application depends on this. Keep in mind, it's a thirty percent match. So you know, we're looking at anywhere between roughly a thirty thousand dollar expenditure on the part of the town up to about fifty-five thousand. Match.
And how much of this have we, do we have in the budget? How much of this thirty percent match? Like, if we are forty thousand dollars in the budget, then we can see how much we wanna ask for because we have forty thousand in the budget. But I wanna say we wanna ask for the full three million and then we can't match thirty percent of that in budget.
Yeah, I I can tell you for sure we don't have the nine hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
I just thought I'd ask.
You can find it.
Now we could.
Well. At the risk of doing something, not doing something else. Um, we do not have the funds budgeted, but we could easily incorporate that into the capital improvement plan. And then it either any of the levels that I discussed.
Bob, this is separate from that four hundred thousand?
This is separate from that.
That we previously discussed.
Yes.
We already have that money.
We have right now.
We still have to figure out where it's.
Where it's gonna be right.
Right, but it might be, it might narrow that down if we got funding for some of the other things that were also in question.
Right.
And of course, we have sidewalks just about everywhere. If we have more money than we, if we get more money than we, um, yeah, than we have. Thoughts?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Surprise. Um. I, I like, from from the email that Bob sent with the three options there, I like the Grubbs Road a lot. Basically connecting this, I'm gonna refer to it as a campus. You know, our town's campus with sidewalks, I think, is a, is a good idea. So, yeah, that's, of those three options, I think that would be my number one choice of those three for that.
And that includes this little piece of sidewalk that's left out here on McCandless Drive Two.
We'll incorporate that.
But that was included as well as the Coomer, because that wasn't named specifically, so I was just making.
Then that connects us all the way through from Blazer, all the way around, going all the way down to North Park.
I agree with that, and when council member, um, excuse me, Senator Williams was here, she was actually commenting on, when she was talking to us about sidewalks, she actually commented on that strip out there. She saw some people out there and she said, ask about sidewalks. If we had plans for sidewalks there when we met. And we said that, you know, one of the possibilities, but that we would really like to get that contiguous, you know, to the park. That's Hickory Hills, that's all this new, nice new development that we're doing. So I'm I'm for that. So that was my pick too. Okay. Any other comments? What what's the um nineteen project? How?
It essentially the intent originally was to take sidewalks from where they end at about the Firestone Store down to Longview. And we did receive a grant. It is not sufficient to provide the sidewalks for that entire line. We can do a a portion of those where we can try to secure funding for the entire, you know, if you get a future thing.
And to make it even more interesting, in the process, those properties that come up for sale, so if a developer buys them, they rezone and improves them, then they're responsible for putting sidewalks. So we're like, do we really wanna put our grant money in that when it could be done for us pro bono? So that's kinda where we, that's kinda, it's a little quick summary of of that. So, but of course, that may happen, they may not happen, so that's, that's where we are on that. Are there any other comments? I'm just gonna do the math. If you do that in your head, I'm gonna be really just.
I am a rare lawyer who likes numbers.
Yeah, it is.
Fifty-seven, what?
It's the thirty percent. That would be the town.
Of of, I know, but what did you add up?
Well, just, just for the Grubbs Road.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, cuz so the Grubbs Road is a hundred and ninety. Okay, so is that what we we wanted, is that what we, I have one nod, two nods, three nods? Better nod?
Yeah, I had no real opinion, but I'll give you consensus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, so I guess a hundred and ninety?
Yes.
Okay.
That doesn't stress our budget too much.
No.
And those, those other two can conceivably fit into the other.
We're still working on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's, they're still in play for that other.
Correct.
Yeah, everything, everything is in play there. We we have an extension, so we have some time to, I hope everyone's still thinking about that. Okay, good, yeah, good. Okay, so um, the floor is open for a motion in E.
Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution number nineteen in twenty twenty-one, authorizing the submission of a multimodal grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand. Okay, second.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions on that? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, um.
Hey.
Okay.
First off, I'm gonna thank all of you for meeting attrition I over the. Oh, sorry. Oh, no, 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 we had to remove that.
Okay.
That's okay.
That's.
Again, thank you for meeting attrition I to review the the budget over the last week. Wanted to, for the the public, go here and at home to start a review of the proposed twenty twenty-two budget. Tonight, we'll go through revenues and departments four hundred and four fifty-seven. We'll try to keep this at a fairly high level for everyone and yeah, feel free to stop me and ask questions if you have any. The proposed consolidated budget, we have a general fund budget of sixteen million September and eighty-five thousand dollars for the, in the general fund. We have created a new fund that represents the receipt of the American Rescue Plan Funds that the town received in twenty twenty-one and second tranche will be received in twenty twenty-two. You're familiar with the transportation, transportation district fund. The capital improvements budget was a year of four point two million dollars. The assessment fund, which has been in place for a number of years, the state highway aid fund of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that receives state liquid fuel funds from the state, which is the town's share of the gasoline tax and various transportation fees that the state passes along. Total of all funds, twenty-three million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars is our total budget for the year as proposed. The twenty-two general fund revenues, primarily the town is funded through earned income tax, we're estimating six million dollars in revenue. Real estate tax at three point three million. Really, the transfer tax, we purposely tried to keep conservative, not knowing how interesting or the overall housing market will have an impact on that number over the years. Business privilege tax, which is still questionable as a result of the pandemic impacts that we've seen. It's operated or or performed much more strongly than we anticipated, but we're still trying to stay conservative with that. There's various other sources of funding, local funding primarily is received from other local governments. State funding is coming from primarily the pension relief funds and the fire relief funds. Then we have various charges, services and permits that total fifteen million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in new revenues for the town for the year. You can see the pie chart with the percentages. Earned income is thirty-eight percent, real estate twenty-one, and really the transfer, business privilege, ten and eight percent respectively. And then the rest falls into smaller percentages that make up our total budget for the year. Where the money goes, general fund expenditures, forty-eight percent of the town's budget goes to public safety. Public safety being police, fire, building inspection, code enforcement and planning. Public works takes up almost half of the remaining half at twenty-four percent. General government, which is administration, finance and the town hall operating budgets of fourteen percent. And then culture and recreation, five percent, transfers, eight percent. The general government category, town administration is twenty-two percent, general finance, twenty-one. Tax collection seventeen, half of that money comes back to the town from the school district. That we, we build them for that service, buildings and plant at twenty-eight percent. We have a fairly even distribution councils at four and citizen information of eight percent. Town council. The big change that you'll see here this year, it's fairly status quo with one exception. And this will be up to the council. We have put money into the budget if council wanted to consider building some type of a strategic planning session and engaging a moderator from the outside to try to put together a plan of action and, or the next two to five years. Combination of capital expenses, ongoing expenses and policy changes that they would like to see over that period of time. That's something that we can discuss further as we are going through the process. We realize it's a new thought to all of you. It is something that other communities do regularly, so it's not unusual to be done. But we don't necessarily want to, the first side issue is you would like to go a different direction with that. Otherwise, the council budget is fairly status quo. Administration makes up the, essentially the manager's office and part of the reception. So it's primarily personnel driven. There's some slight changes because of staffing costs this year versus prior years. And overall, you see a reduction, but that, that primarily is differences in old staff versus new staff. Finance administration handles all of the fiscal operations of the town. Personnel services make up seventy-five percent of that four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars budget. Big change in financial administration for the year is that we have moved the insurance package, insurance policies had been paid for previously out of finance. And we felt that because insurance covers all of the town operation, we moved it to the town hall department only because the town hall department in my mind reflected an overall operation of the town as opposed to finance. Finance, tax and administration also all continue to include the ongoing efforts to put together or have in purchase new enterprise software that will streamline the operation, hopefully make us a little more efficient moving forward and eliminate a lot of redundancies that occur currently. Tax collection, again, that consists of a full-time tax collector, part-time clerk and a part of the receptionist duties. Again, this is paid in part by the school district. You see from this slide that the reimbursements of the school district are just over eighty-one thousand dollars. And historically, we're getting about thirty-five thousand dollars in fees for tax certifications that we do on an annual basis. Citizen information is our public information officer. And he handles all of our social media and website updates. We, we have a number of different platforms that we're using. We are proposing that we would continue to do, use all of the platforms that we have been using for twenty twenty-two. The big purchase or the big cost in this category would be the upgrade of the town's website, which we feel is necessary to improve the, the ability to find information, to submit citizen requests and things to create more online presence and the ability to do business with the town, whether it be a, something like a pavilion permit, a building permit, a contribution to the heritage center. Do that online as opposed to having to come in to the town or sending something in the mail. Some other small information that, or items that we, we want to be able to do to just show the town off a little bit more, have a specific tent that we can make use of during events. If we're attending a chamber of commerce event or something that we can have show presence of our, our students. Building plant is the cost associated with the the maintenance of this building, meaning our floor, police department and the public works building. As well as some of the surrounding areas, but primarily the outside part of the building is covered under the parks department. The biggest change here, as I mentioned, in the finance category is that we're moving property, vehicle and liability insurance is under this area as opposed to finance. Otherwise, this is a budget that is fairly consistent from year to year for the, the ongoing maintenance of the building. You will see in two weeks, when we talk about capital improvements, a, a number of improvements that we're proposing for this building to start work here as well as work in the parks.
How, how old is our HVAC system?
Um, or.
Okay. What did you do the last time there was a big rain, Bob?
I was, I was like.
What did everybody in administration?
No, 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 it was just Bob.
We check RJ's too.
It was a, it was a day that RJ decided to work from home, so Bob was running back and forth between RJ's office and Bob's office trying to clean up the water, so I feel for you.
It was, it was coming in the wind, our windows also.
So, yeah. So we were experiencing that, that issue, and we have ongoing HVAC issues that we will begin to address in twenty twenty-two, but more on that.
To come.
Mr. Charles.
More to come.
More to come.
More to come.
On that. So, um, public safety, you'll see on the pie chart, the seventy percent of our public, public safety budget is devoted to police protection. Fourteen to fire protection and prevention. Then we also have code enforcement, planning and zoning and school crossing guards as well as a small pieces applied for the ambulance service expenses. Um, in the police budget, about six point one million dollars. The majority of that is for personal services. We are proposing two new police cars for the department. We're also proposing that we will replace a sergeant who retired in twenty twenty. And as well as replacing any other officers who choose to retire during twenty twenty-two. A third position is being proposed that we, in the budget document, was referred to as an analyst, that it could, the title is in consequential, really. They would handle a lot of administrative functions that police officers are currently engaged in that can put them back out on the road and help the chief with some of those administrative functions that we'd like to see move under management a little bit more. One thing I do want to note in the police budget is that state aid is received, over four hundred thousand dollars in state aid is received annually to offset some of the costs of the police pension fund. The school district pays for approximately seventy-two to seventy-three percent of the school resource officers' salaries and benefits on an annual basis. And we do receive about sixty-five thousand dollars a year for various police details and protective services that our department provides. Is off duty overtime to, whether it's a school event, sporting event, in some, some cases, churches in the past, a cinema has, has utilized the services. So when somebody needs a police officer, we can provide that and then we're reimbursed for those expenses. For eleven, fire protection and prevention. This is a combination of, that's a one point one million dollars. A big chunk of that money goes to the volunteer fire companies on an annual basis of a hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred. Third department is program. Uh, the department also pays for a fire marshal and half of the administrative assistant salary and benefits that who, she works for fire prevention and for building inspection. We are proposing just one full-time fire marshal in this budget. The ambulance budget primarily is set up to record expenses associated with maintenance and services that we provide to the ambulance authority. We do provide landscaping services. We also provide maintenance of vehicles and fuel for the authority. The maintenance and the fuel are reimbursed by the authority. And what I wanted to point out is that the, the work that the town does on the authority vehicles saves, which is done at a cost of about fifty to fifty percent lower than what they would be able to find out in the, the open market with the dealership or the service department. There are substantial savings that the authority receives as a result of our work. The, the biggest thing that I wanted to point out for the ambulance budget this year is that the communities that are being served by the ambulance authority have been speaking with the authority staff. And we've come to the agreement that we would like to have a review of the operational and organizational structure of the authority completed during twenty twenty-two, and we've included monies in the budget for the town's share of that study to be completed. For thirteen, code enforcement. This includes the building code, building inspector, a full-time code enforcement officer in half of administrative assistant. These people, they, they handle all of the building permits, they handle all of the code complaints that we receive day in and day out. The biggest item change in this department is we are proposing a replacement vehicle for the building inspector. It had been scheduled to occur in twenty nineteen, no, twenty twenty.
It got skipped the year we got.
Yeah, yeah, it was skipped at, at, at the building inspector's request. We had postponed that for a couple of years, his request. So, um, just to, to kind of put things into perspective, yes, we have a three hundred thousand dollar budget that we do receive about a, a little over a hundred thousand dollars back per year in building permit fees and files that we receive. For fourteen, planning and zoning, we have a planning development administrator and full-time administrative assistant that are, are paid out of this department. The biggest item in this is that we will, we are planning to continue the process of updating our planning and zoning or our, sorry, our zoning ordinance and land development ordinances. And the intent is that before the end of the year, we will have a recommendation in front of the council for a consultant to undertake that work, and then that work will continue into two thousand twenty-two. For nineteen, across the school crossing guards, this is a program that the town has undertaken for years. They work with the school district, there are currently four guards. We staff various positions, locations in the the town. The school district pays for fifty percent of that expense. And so there are four that are staffed and we have a position budgeted for one alter. Culture and recreation. You'll see that that figure at eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, seventy-seven percent of that number is made up by the library. Then community celebrations and parks, that's up to the majority of rest of that culture would be the heritage center. The heritage center is eighteen thousand dollars and is just the operating cost of the building itself. Does not include any staffing. Parks here fifty-four is the only staff time or staffing costs associated with that is to provide to some part-time or temporary summer workers to help the crew out and then maintain the parks. Some of the projects that we are proposing in this budget are some upgrades of the well, park parking lot and some improvements to pavilions that are here in the parks or at well for. Any, the big items will be discussed during the capital improvement. Library, I don't want to beat this because we heard by the presentation from Amy earlier in the year, over the evening. At this point, based on discussions with the budget committee, the number is set or budgeted at twenty twenty-one levels that is will be adjusted based on if need be under, based on decisions made by the council tonight or at a future date. Four fifty-seven, community events. This traditionally has been the community days event. We've expanded that to include police department stationing lights out and and smaller events that we would like to try to to have, to have a few additional community engagement opportunities for the town, but we're trying to keep that within the framework of the budget as we've we've had it for a number of years. We're just moving money around. Back to our consolidated budget. That is the best and dirty.
This is a timeline for future workshops as well as the public hearing and then the potential final vote.
Are there any questions on anything that Barbara Trish here? All right. Here, thank you both very much. The last item on our agenda is the library budget vote. I think, are there any comments? We want to go straight for a vote.
Okay. As Bob just mentioned, well, first I want to say, you know, if we could give more and more and more to library, of course we would. I think the council agrees that that's about. But one thing I did want to point out, Bob just mentioned, I think you had a number. I was getting some very rough numbers of what, if you look at a, you know, the commitment of the town in terms of our culture recreation budget as a whole, and we are giving about seventy-six, seventy-seven percent of our entire culture recreation budget to the library at this point. And with the ask, that brings us up to eighty percent of the what we currently have budgeted for culture recreation. Now comparing to other towns, you know, we're way off the charts. For example, Ross Township, they're around thirty-nine percent. Marshall, twenty-four percent, Franklin Park, twenty-five percent of their total culture recreation budget. And I think it's it's just something that I don't think it means that we should be giving less to the library. I do think we need to start thinking about where our community stands in terms of culture recreation and what we're committing to that. So I'm sure with that. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so I mean, these are always tough choices. I think this coming year, there's been a lot of work here at town hall that needs to get done. You know, the HVAC has to get replaced over the next year or two. I think that's a two-stage project. You know, the windows have to get replaced. And last year, you know, the the library, we had the the original proposed budget. And it was kind of their bottom line budget, but we asked them to go back and make edits to to lower that because of everything going on. And they ended up cutting somewhere around eighty-three or eighty-five thousand dollars out of that budget. It was also on the table that they were going to reduce their capital, their capital expenditure funds. That got pulled off the table before the vote on that to approve the budget. I I was thinking that 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 initial cut was going to be repeatable year over year, not the cut, but that the cut would carry through year over year. You know, which is why I like seeing a cut to expenses versus the capital expenditure. But I I think there's, you know, there's always competing interests and it I I think capital expenditure money right now, we we have to put into town hall. And that's why I was asking some questions on the five-year plan for the library in terms of the capital expenditures. So that's, you know, that's just kind of where where I am on that.
Are there any other comments or the floor is open? Okay.
I think where I stand is, you know, every department or every authority that we fund in some way, they all come to us and say, hey, we need this, we need that. Of everyone that we fund with their PPP loan they got, they're probably in the best shape of all of our others that we have to fund. So, you know, when it's hard times, the budget, it's the, you know, it's the have to have or it's the, you know, the nice to have. So, you know, we need windows, we need an HVAC system or stormwater management isn't getting any better. So that's sort of where I come down on this. It's a tough choice, but kind of need to do what you need to do to keep the building running.
Are there any other comments or is there a motion? If council does not vote on the library budget is automatically approved as submitted to council. So we can let it ride and it will automatically be approved or we can make a motion.
What are our options?
Our options are a motion to accept or reject the the twenty twenty-two library budget. A motion, we could make a motion to approve it at a different level than that, a previous level or a different percentage increase or are you help, are you helping me?
Yeah, so I think the the best way to handle it is to approve or reject and then make a recommendation as to what level the town is looking to the library. So they're interested. I think that's the best way.
Okay, okay. So that would be the the motion would be to accept or reject the proposed budget. First one.
Does everybody understand if there is a rejection of the budget, the way we have been agreed is that it refers to the current year's budget until such time as all five municipalities would agree on an ultimate budget proposed through the same process.
So. So you're saying if we reject this budget, then it goes back to last year's budget. Well, I mean, the current year, but the budget that was approved in twenty for twenty-one for this year. Okay. So that would keep it the same that it was last year.
All municipalities would follow that.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. So we don't, we wouldn't have to make anything more specific than that. Is there a motion? Go to our car.
To reject the twenty twenty-two library budget.
I think that is correct. Is there a second? Second, okay. Any other comments? All right, there is a motion and a second to reject the proposed library budget for twenty twenty-two. All those in favor of rejecting the budget indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Before I take a motion to adjourn, there will be a short executive session.
Real estate and labor.
Yep. All right. Mary, is there a motion to adjourn? A second? Those in favor indicate by saying aye. There'll be no first business after the executive session. Meeting council chambers.